So good morning, everybody, and welcome to the second day of the California State Board Meeting. Seeing that all board members are present, Executive Director Allen, would you please call the role to establish a quorum?
Member Burr.
Here.
Member Fatah.
Here.
Member Glover Woods.
Here.
Member McQuillan.
Here.
Member Navo.
Here.
Member Patilla Brownson.
Here.
Member Rodriguez.
Here.
Member Rucker.
Here.
Vice President Strauss.
Here.
Member Son.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. So, reporting out a closed session, the board discussed or took action on the following legal matters: Kayla J. versus State and Carrie K. versus State. So today I have some general announcements. Members of the public wishing to dial in for public comment should view the live stream of the meeting to know at what time we'll be asking for public comment on the agenda items. Public comment will be provided by dialing the phone number and participant access code, and then following each of the operator's prompts. When you are dialing in, the callers will be added to a caller queue. The operator will notify callers when it's their turn to provide public comment. We're going to also ask you as the public, when you call in for public comment, please turn down your speaker volume over computer if you're following us on the live feed, so that we don't get the echo effect, and that we'll be able to hear your public comment that you've waited to give us. And board members, we're reminding you to mute your microphones when you're not speaking, and keep your cameras on as much as possible to ensure we maintain a quorum throughout today's virtual meeting. For each item, there'll be an opportunity for board members to raise your hand using the Zoom participant window if you'd like to make a comment or ask a question. Today, we are taking item 11. Item 11 is a public hearing regarding a petition for the renewal of a charter school currently under the oversight of the State Board of Education pursuant to California Education Code 47605.9B, consideration of Prepatek Los Angeles High, which was denied by the Los Angeles Unified School District. The CDE recommends that the State Board hold a public hearing to deny the request to renew Prepatek Los Angeles High, a grade 9 through 12 charter school, based on the CDE findings pursuant to California Ed Code Sections 47605, 47605.9, 47607E, 47607.2B, and California Ed Code of Regulations Title V, Section 119675. This item will be presented by Stephanie Farland from CDE. Stephanie, I turn it over to you. You may begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Vice President Strauss, members of the board, Deputy Superintendent Gregson. Today, we are going to hear the appeal of the renewal for Prepatek Los Angeles High School. So Prepatek Los Angeles High School is operated by, let me get my screen right here, so I can see, is operated by Alta Public Schools, a charter management organization that also operates two other schools within the LAUSD, Los Angeles Unified School District. Prepatek is seeking authorization from the State Board of Education to renew their grade 9 through 12 charter school within the boundaries of LAUSD. The petitioners initially saw authorization from LAUSD, and on December 9, 2020, LAUSD denied the petitioner's request for renewal by a vote of 5 to 0. The petitioners submitted their petition to the California Department of Ed on appeal on January 8, 2021. Today, this Department of Education is recommending that the State Board hold a public hearing and deny the request to renew PTLAH, a grade 9 through 12 charter school. At the April 13, 2021 meeting, the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools, ACCS, voted unanimously in favor of the CDE's recommendation to deny renewal of PTLAH, the first time the ACCS has voted unanimously in favor of denial, at least in the last several years. Pursuant to Ed Code 47605.9B, if the State Board chooses to grant renewal of the petition pursuant to 47607, the State Board shall designate, in consultation with the petitioner, either the governing board of the school district or the county board of education in which a charter school is located as the chartering authority. If approved by the SBE today, the CD is recommending that LAUSD be designated as the chartering authority. I do want to note that we did consult with the charter school, and they did request that the LA County Office of Education be their authorizer should the State Board approve. The department did have a discussion, we are required to consult with them, but felt that because LAUSD already has two other of the Alta Public Schools schools within their oversight, that it made more sense for this school to be under LAUSD's oversight, especially as most of the recommendation today is based on fiscal concerns. The educational program of Prepatek, the mission of PTLAH is to provide a world-class education to every student through an inquiry and investigation school model that will prepare students to meet the challenges of the global 21st century. PTLAH is an authorized public international baccalaureate diploma program school in LAUSD, which affords pupils the opportunity and access to a small rigorous high school in their neighborhood. The 2019-20 school year was the first year 11th graders participated in the two-year IB program at Prepatek. At the end of this year, 2020-2021 school year, PTLAH will have their first group of pupils eligible to receive the IB diploma. The CDE's findings and concerns. The department was unable to determine if PTLAH met the applicable academic renewal criteria pursuant to Ed Code 47607B based on California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress, CAS, scores, as a charter school only has one year of data and does not report any colors on the California school dashboard. The last, the year we have, as it is for most schools, 2018, 19 on CAS, 25% met exceeded standards in ELA, and 3% met or exceeded standards in math. It is a high school, so as you remember, they only test 11th graders. So it did take a couple of years to get to a point where they could test, and this is the only year we have. The CD also reviewed the following verified data that the petitioner included and provided as criteria for charter renewal, the California dashboard data for ELA math, chronic absenteeism rates, suspension rates, and English learner progress indicators. They also submitted Northwest Education Association, NWEA, measurable academic progress data, so MAP data, so we do have that included in the item. In terms of their dashboard data, remember, there are no colors because they only had a year, but the 2019 California school dashboard reflects their performance under California's accountability system as follows: ELA is 65 points below standard, and math was 169.8 points below standard. Are you hearing feedback from my microphone? Okay, I'm just hearing it then. I hear myself being repeated. California school, chronic absenteeism and graduation rates, the dashboard does not show chronic absenteeism rates for PTLAH because it is a high school. Don't gather that information for high schools. The California school dashboard didn't, also does not show graduation rates for PTLAH as it did not have a graduating class until 2020. As far as suspension rates, in 2018, they had 6.5%, which put them in the red, but they did improve significantly in 2019, moving to blue in one year. The 2019 California school dashboard was the first year the LP was reported. The LP is calculated based on a student's performance on the English Language Proficiency Assessments for California, the LPAC. The data for the 2019 LP shows that 43% of PTLAH English learner pupils are making progress towards English language proficiency. In terms of the NWEA MAP data for reading in ELA, if you remember from yesterday, reading in ELA, we're in two separate slides, so we take the data and the assessment data that the school provides us, and the school provided, provided us with reading in ELA combined, so it may look a little different than yesterday. This is a winter-to-winter NWEA/ELA four-year comparison for the class of 2020, and you can see that in some areas, they went up, in some areas, they maintained, maintained their scores. And this is, these are scale scores for overall student progress towards mastery. And then the next slide is their, oh, go, I, yeah, thank you, NWA MAP data, this is math, and again, you can see they stayed pretty constant. English learner progress indicator, these are LPAC results in percentages. 38% progressed at least one level, 4.7% maintained their Level 4 designation, 33% maintained their Level 1 through 3H designation, and 23.8% decreased at least one level, which comes out to about 57% maintaining or decreasing. So the department's findings and concerns specific to fiscal. So there has been communication regarding fiscal concerns over the life of this petition. As stated before, it is an SB-authorized school, so has been under the oversight of the department and the State Board for the last several years. It is noted that over the course of its oversight, the SBE has issued five letters to Prepatek outlining the following fiscal concerns: negative fund balances, no reserves. Although Prepatek has responded to all letters of concern with seemingly sound plans to address fiscal issues, the school has remained in poor financial condition throughout the term of its current charter. So there were five letters of concern that were sent to Prepatek over the course of its current charter. And although they responded, every year, they were back on to the fiscal, fiscal concern list and have stayed on there. The, the annual reports that the board gets of all of its SBE charters every year regarding academic and fiscal health, they have been on the poor fiscal list for the entirety of their, of their petition. PTLAH has a poor financial record since its approval in 2016. Prepatek's fiscal year 2021 second interim report dated March 15 indicates that PTLAH is projecting a negative ending fund balance of $322,000. The fiscal year 2019-20 audit report reflected an unqualified status with a negative ending fund balance of $423,000 with a 0% reserve. And just so, as we're kind of going through this, and I often need to sort of relearn this every time we talk about fiscal and budget issues, that there is a difference between ending fund balance and ending cash balance, and we're going to talk about both of those. Ending fund balance is the net asset, so the difference between total assets and total liabilities. The formula is beginning fund balance plus or minus operating surplus or operating deficit. Ending cash balance of a cash flow statement equals the cash amount shown on the balance sheet. Cash flow is the change in the charter school's cash from one period to the next. So pursuant to Ed Code 47607E, and this is something that was implemented post 1505, this is part of 1505 legislation, the CDE provided notice to Prepatek of its findings that Prepatek is demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in its petition due to the following substantial fiscal factors. Prepatek reported a 0% reserve in the 2021 first interim report, and per PTLAH's memorandum of understanding with the State Board, Prepatek is to maintain a reserve of 5%. Prepatek reported a negative ending fund balance of $274,000 in the fiscal year 2021 first interim report. They were given an, it's a 30-day notice, so they were given an opportunity to correct, to submit here and correct, submit corrective actions. As of October 31, 2020, Prepatek's net assets are negative $952,241, and their debt ratio is 2.34, which means that PTLAH's total liabilities are approximately two times the value of its total assets. Furthermore, PTLAH's working capital ratio would drop to .18, which means that they have, they would have no current assets to cover its current liabilities. They did respond on April 2 to our 30-day notice. The Fiscal Corrective Action Plan provided to, provided by Prepatek contained three main plans to address the negative ending fund balances, receipt of the Payroll Protection Program loan of $470,000, applying for COVID-19 relief funding, and increasing student enrollment. Additionally, PTLAH noted that it expects to increase its reserve to 5% by 2122. That's, that's, the CDE's analysis of their response, we reviewed all the information submitted to PTLAH by PTLAH in response to 30-day notice. We acknowledged that they tried improving its fiscal condition, and its updated multi-year financial plan reflects a projected positive ending fund balance of $165 for fiscal year 2021 with a reserve of 2.9%. However, they still failed to meet the required 5% outlined in its MOU. They have not maintained the 5% in its reserves since its inception. A big piece of how they're trying to improve their fiscal condition really was their PPP loan, which provides them some cushion for the next year, for the next couple of years. In addition, Prepatek relies heavily on short-term financing to the tune of $646,000 in fiscal year 2021 to cover a cash shortage regarding prepayment of the short-term financing. It appears that PTLAH may incur a high financing cost with factoring adding an additional negative effect to their budget. The CD concludes that although the response partially remedies some of the violations noted in the CDE's letter, they still are projected to have some issues with the 5% outlined in its MOU of reserve, and quite frankly, failed to provide any long-term fiscal structural changes that will prevent the school from experiencing similar fiscal deficiencies in future years. As I said before, the PPP loan really was, was something that they relied on in this budget to, in their, in their response letter, sort of get them over the hump, but they've not made any changes structurally. And we've seen over the last five years that we've sent many response letters of concern, and still has, they have fallen short fiscally. So we did, and you probably, hopefully, saw it, because in your, in your documents that you received, but the school did submit a new budget just a couple of days ago. And although it was very, very last minute, we tried to go through it and, and see if there were any changes. Mind you, that this is a budget that LAUSD did not see, nor did ACCS, and there were some unexplained differences in this fiscal plan that we couldn't, we couldn't explain, there weren't explanations attached to it. So some of the discrepancies we have here, and this is just a difference between the report they turned in this week and the report from March that went to the ACCS. Their enrollment changed a little bit, it went up 22, not really sure how or why. Their federal funding, from the March report to the May report, went up almost a little over half a million dollars, and there's no explanation as to why. That is, local funding went down, professional consulting fees, that minus $142,000, about $142,000, is a one-time reduction in their payment to their central office, so a one-time reduction in the, in the payment they normally give to Alta Public Schools. They're not, I'm guessing, not paying it once, maybe in the coming year, or this year, I'm not sure about which year that that reflects. And then their payment on debt, they had initially projected a $58,000 payment, dollar payment in March, and now they're projecting a $457,000 payment. Not clear where that $400,000 difference is coming from. So there, there were some differences, and I'm sure that they'll be able to answer questions on this, but it was not clear in what they submitted to us, how some of these changes have come about, or whether there are long-term structural changes, or just one-time changes. Next slide. Additional fiscal concerns. As I've said, since its obsession, inception, Prepatek has demonstrated poor financial management and has relied heavily on borrowing to cover its expenses. It's unclear to us how Alta Public Schools has supported Prepatek in regard to their fiscal expertise and financial planning. It definitely is part of the, the consult, the fee that is paid every year to Alta, and, and from what I understand, and from what they have said, that covers fiscal management. PTLAH nor Alta Public Schools has provided the CDE or the State Board with a plan to manage or cut expenses to meet their fiscal uncertainty. And I will say that in the ACCS meeting, the commissioners had questions about this, and a lot of concerns from some of our charter operators on the commission and charter staff as to why there's not ever been a fiscal plan to actually cut expenses to help, to help their fiscal health. PTLAH employs a large number of staff for a very small student population, 23 teachers, three administrators, two resource specialists, and a council, one counselor for about 350 students. And so that, most of their budget really is, is towards staffing. The petitioner does not meet the renewal criteria inconsistent with sound educational practice. The petitioner does not meet the renewal criteria and does not present a sound educational program. While the majority of the educational program is sound, there's some real key pieces that are missing. The CDE finds that the lack of an English learner curriculum is problematic and does not align with a complete educational program. So they do have a detailed intervention program, but they do not have a curriculum, an English learner curriculum. Additionally, as a PTLAH petition does not include reasonable descriptions of all, all charter elements, the CDE finds that the petition is not entirely consistent with sound educational practice. Our findings regarding charter elements. The CDE finds that the petition does not necessarily provide, as just mentioned, a reasonably comprehensive description of Element A. There was Element D in there, and I will go into why I have that crossed out. Additionally, the CDE notes that the following elements could be strengthened: Element J, suspension expulsion; Element N, dispute resolution and effect on authorizer and financial projections. So as stated just a moment ago, Element A, which is description of educational program, the CDE finds that Prepatek petition is not consistent with sound educational practice as it does not present a reasonably comprehensive description of the ELD program specifically regarding not having a required California State Standards-aligned ELD curriculum. The governance structure, going into the ACCS meeting, we had still not received the required conflict of interest code that needed to be submitted. They did submit it a day before the ACCS meeting, so they are now in compliance. So the Element D, governance structure piece is something that we can, we can now say they're in compliance with. The CDE finds that the Prepatek petition provides a reasonably comprehensive description of Element J and Element N. However, CDE notes that these elements could be strengthened. Pursuant to Ed Code Section 47605(c)(5)J, the Prepatek petition is required to clearly state that when an appeal relating to the placement of a pupil or the manifestation determination has been requested by either the parent or Prepatek, the pupil shall remain in an interim alternative education sending, setting pending the decision of the hearing officer, whichever occurs first unless the parent and PTLAH agree. Otherwise, this is language that we find missing in a lot of petitions that come forward to us, so this would need to be changed if this petition is approved. Element N, we note that, per the request of the district, the petitioner changed the language of this element after submitting the petition to LAUSD in order to reflect LAUSD as an authorizer, and there was just some discretion, and honestly, you know, with 1505 and the new language about who's authorizer, who the authorizer will be, will be assigned to, there definitely was some, some back and forth about who actually needed to be listed here. So it just needs to be corrected if the charter petition is approved. Effect on authorizer and financial projections. The Prepatek petition does provide the required information and financial projections. However, the CDE notes that the language can be strengthened to specifically state the manner in which administrative services of the school are to, are to be provided. So for instance, they have two administrative providers for the school. Alta, which is their CMO, is one of the providers, and we noted how much they receive, I think it's 12% of their total funding. But they also have another back office provider called Charter Impact that receives about $100,000 from the school, and it was, it was not clear in the petition or any of the documents how, how, what services, which specific services that each of those entities provide to school. So in conclusion, the CDE recommends that the State Board deny the request to renew the PTLAH petition. As I said earlier, at the April 2021 ACCS meeting, commissioners voted unanimously to recommend denial of the Prepatek renewal. If the SBE grants renewal to petition pursuant to Ed Code Section 47607, the CDE is recommending that the State Board designate the Los Angeles Unified School District as the chartering authority for Prepatek High School. And that concludes my presentation.
So Stephanie, thank you so much for a really specific and thorough presentation. So Stephanie, thank you so much for a really specific and thorough presentation. We are now going to open up the public hearing at 10:02 a.m. First, we're going to hear from the petitioners representing the charter school and each side will have 12 minutes. So we'll ask our charter school representatives to join us now and then you may begin.
Hello, can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, we can.
Good morning, dear board members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to tell our side of the story. My name is Javier Reyes, I'm the founder and CEO of Alta Public Schools. In 2015, we sought to start Prepatech High School at the behest of our parents that love holistic approach of an IB education. At that, at that time, we made a promise to our parents that their children would get a world-class education and get them to college if we were approved. In early 2016, we came to this board on appeal from LAUSD. During that meeting, one SBE board member shared, "Not sure why you're here", and voted for us to start the school on the very same promise we made to our parents. Provide a world-class education to all students and get them to college well-prepared. Today, we want to affirm to those board members and the families we serve, we kept our promise. We are providing a world-class education to every student. Our students are showing steady growth in ELA and math over the current charter term, as demonstrated by NWA scores. Last year, with our first seniors, we had a graduating class of nearly 90% and 70% of those graduates are going to college. This is an average greater than LAUSD and the state. This year, we're projected to graduate 97% of our students despite the pandemic and more and more of our students are going to prestigious colleges and universities. On our finances this year, we're also projected to end the year with positive net assets of 300,000 and reserves of 5.5%. But over the last five years, it has not been a straight shot. It's been more like the path of a butterfly. After we opened our doors in the fall of 2016, we opened with 100-plus students and with no charter school startup grant funding or any kind of, of any, or any other kind of financing. The second year, we doubled our enrollment and moved to an LAUSD Prop 39 site. Soon we realized that if we grew again by another 100-plus students the following year, the Prop 39 site would be inadequate for student stability and undermine the IB program facility requirements. Therefore, in order to provide educational stability and equity to our students, we were presented with a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity in the LA market, a permanent facility nearby. We believe that if we invested early in a stable facility, the benefits would be enormous for the community at large in the long term. So we borrowed to refurbish the facility that the school occupies today. This is our home behind me. Our parents are very proud of their school and how great it reflects on the positive impact students are making in their community. However, to prepare this stable home, we had to secure financing, borrow internally from our sister schools and slowly build the reserves requirement. At the end of that second year, we reflected short and long, both academically and financially. We concluded that although the academic program, program was strong and students were achieving, we needed to engage financial experts to achieve a balanced budget and gain reserves and to ensure we would fulfill the promise we made to the community and to this board. This is why in the third fiscal year, we contracted with charter school finance experts, Spencer Stiles and Charter Impact to help us create a multi-year plan to get us back to good financial health representative of a world-class school. Here's Spencer Stiles to explain what he and his team did for us with our fiscal austerity plan to get us back on track. Spencer?
Javier, and good morning, board members. Thank you for your time and attention today. Prior getting into some of the historical financial activity of the school, I do want to clarify and point out what I think is a pretty critical concept. And that is the fact that the school has, looking historically, not actually maintained or hit that 5% ending fund balance, which is clearly a, a significant concern. I do think it is important to point out, just in terms of accuracy, that that fund balance is a cumulative number. And so as you can see on the screen in front of you, the first two years of deficit were large enough to create a hole, which were then required three years of balanced budgets and surpluses to overshadow them. So while the school has not that 5% deserve until the current year, again, it is important to understand that it is a cumulative figure and the school has actually turned the people, so to speak, financially to 3, as you can see with the annual surplus of 390,000. Now, to give a little historical context, Charter Impact was engaged during the, the middle of year three after the school had understandable concerns over its fiscal operations, accuracy of forecasting and randomness of financial reporting. As a part of our initial engagement, we'd review the internal control, fiscal policies and procedures, accuracy of forecasting and budgeting, and were asked to come on board full-time from first of 2019 towards the end of year three. As a part of our engagement, we immediately changed the reporting process, increased the accuracy of projections and budgets, and also sped up reporting to the board, giving the schools the information and data necessary to make the proper decisions for fiscal solvency. That does include providing financial reports directly to the board within 10 days after the year. Looking at the operations going through year 33, Javier did mention that there was a significant amount of facility costs which led to that $550,000 deficit or cumulative $880,000 negative fund balance. In year three, those facility costs did not continue. The Prop 39 site was eliminated as it was no longer necessary. Staff levels were frozen in that fiscal year with the exception of necessary instruction staff for classrooms. The student ADA and enrollment increased by 15 and the result was a $390,000 surplus, making a huge reduction of that negative fund balance. In year four, a second site was added to account for the additional six defendants. While the school reached a full grade 9 through 12, the school maintained the freeze on non-required instructional staff. And again, as you can see, the school maintained a balanced budget and had another surplus in year four of about 67,000. In the current year, we are projecting less than 45 years from now, leading with a surplus of 700,000. As referenced, 400,000 did come from a forgiven PPP loan, but even without that, the school is on target to have an additional $300,000 surplus this year. Please also note that that amount does include all of the costs of all the current and outstanding of borrowing necessary to overcome the deferral. Looking forward, while the school is projecting enrollment next year of 370,000, it's also important to note that as a best practice, we also maintain multiple but if scenarios based on the current enrollment as of today to ensure that the school is not incurring any costs, finalizing hiring, or incurring anything else that would potentially tip the school back into a deficit until we have confirmation that that enrollment number is reached. And so with that, I will turn it over to Javier to address the rest of the austerity measures being focused on for the upcoming years.
Mr. Reyes, you may want to unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. To be clear, we want to communicate to you that we understand how, how severe the situation looked, but, and we understand that operating in a deficit is a main reason LAUSD denied our renewal last year despite their efforts from staff to keep us open during the pandemic. We sincerely thank LAUSD staff for their positive recommendation to the current SBE board. We can assure you that if given the opportunity, we will continue to do, do everything we can to make sure our finances continue to improve every year. Moving forward, we, we will continue to work with Spencer Stiles and his team to keep, to continue to keep us on track. We'll continue to work with Larson Communications digital marketing experts to continue to assist us with student recruitment. We'll transition to utilizing a line of credit from our bank instead of expensive short-term financing. We'll, we'll, we will improve our fundraising capabilities and results, working with National Charter School Resource Center. And we'll reactivate our LEA Medical Reimbursement Program to recapture special ed funding of up to 50% of expenditures. We'll identify liquid assets in case of severe cash shortages in our academics. Here's Rachel Villalobos, interim superintendent, to talk about academics.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Good morning, Board President and members of the State Board of Education. In these short five years of existence, we have had the opportunity through hard work from students, parents and staff to become an IB wealth school. We are one out of four IB DP schools in the Los Angeles Unified School District region. We are the only TK through 12th grade to be an IB continuum organization with the PYP, NYPD and DP IB program. The slide that you see here is Prepatech High has both middle years and diploma program authorized, which is part of the IB continuum. 100% of our students are IB students. We have 100% of our students that are IB eligible. Those who do not have an interest in the IB DP candidacy by the time they get to 11th grade benefit from IB via theory of knowledge, approaches to learning, learner profile attributes and community activity service. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Kida, our high school's head of school principal.
Good morning, members of the board. In 2020, 89% of our first group of seniors graduated. Currently, we have 97% of our seniors projected to graduate at the end of this year. 75% of the students who applied to colleges have actually received acceptance letters. In fact, 24% of those students have received acceptance letters from two or more college and university. And we agree with the staff report on page three, pages three to 14, in which Prepatech provided a reasonable comprehensive description of the plan for low-achieving and high-achieving pupils, as well as meeting the AV 5005 middle performance criteria. Our ELD program is comprehensive and comprised of both integrated and designated ELD. The IB program is committed to supporting multilingualism as a fundamental part of increasing intercultural understanding and international mindedness and is equally committed to extending access to an IB education for students from a variety of cultural and linguistic backgrounds.
Thank you, Prepatech. Your time for public presentation is now over.
Thank you very much for your.
Thank you very much. So now we will hear from the school district and the district will have 12 minutes as well.
Good morning, Vice President Strauss, Deputy Superintendent Gregson, members of the SBE. My name is Bob Perry and today I'm representing Los Angeles Unified School District, where I serve as one of the leaders of the Charter Schools Division. I'm joined today by three other members of our team. Our director, Poset Cole Gutierrez, Lillian Lee, who leads our fiscal team that reviewed the petition for Prepatech, and Christian Mendez, who leads the instructional operational team that reviewed the petition as well. We come today to support the recommendation of the California Department of Education staff and the prior decision of the LAUSD Board of Education for the denial of the renewal of this charter. This school is currently operating within LAUSD's boundaries and the district oversees its two sister schools, Academia Moderna and Prepatech Middle School. Should the State Board of Education deny the renewal of this charter school today, please know that LAUSD is committed to actively working with CDE staff as the current authorizing staff and the charter school to support all current students and families to enroll at another LAUSD public school. As we do with the closure of any charter school within LAUSD boundaries, our team has an extensive plan for ensuring the continuity of education for all students, including but not limited to working with the current authorizer and staff to connect parents with local district staff to explore all placement options that would be available, such as international baccalaureate programs, magnet programs, district pilot schools, programs for students with disabilities and charter programs. Also making sure that current transcripts and other relevant documents are thoroughly reviewed to inform the best placement. Regarding the detail of the item before you today, much of our in-depth analysis was similar, if not identical, to that of the CDE staff who has been their authorizer for the past five years. So we will not go through that analysis again today. But would like to provide you some context for our recommendation and the board's ultimate decision. Our review of this application came during the fall of 2020, when California was in the throes of the worst part of the pandemic without a clear path forward for reopening schools for in-person instruction. The situation was unprecedented, as was our recommendation for a conditional approval. Ultimately, after extensive deliberation, the LAUSD Board determined that a denial was warranted and would be in the best interest of students despite the pandemic circumstances. One of the ways we address closure being in the best interest of pupils is by comparing data to the schools the students would have otherwise attended based on their addresses as provided by the school and compiled by the LAUSD Office of Data and Accountability. The data we used was the 2019 data mentioned by the CDE previously. I'd like to call on my colleague, Christian Mendez, to briefly run through the overall comparison by metric.
And hello, good morning. Good morning, board members. A pleasure to be with you this morning. As Dr. Perry has asked, I would like to share with you the comparison of Prepatech, Los Angeles High School's performance compared to the median performance of the 20 resident schools that students would otherwise have attended based on their address. So where data was available, I'll share out. So in ELA, the resident schools median is outperforming Prepatech. Resident schools median is at negative four in ELA, whereas prep distance from standard, whereas Prepatech is at negative 65.7. That translates into 17 out of the 20 resident schools outperforming. Excuse me, in math. Bad timing for a frog in your throat. Okay, in math, in math, again, the same story. We see the resident schools median of 92.3, outperforming the charter schools, distance from standard of negative 169.8, translating into 19 of the 20 resident schools outperforming the school in math. In, in LP, we see the converse, where we see the charter schools 42.9% outperforming the resident schools. So here we actually see the charter school outperforming the majority of the resident schools. Only five of 20 of the school here. In suspension, we see that the majority of the schools, 19 of 20, outperforming the charter school. The median suspension rate is 0.3 for the resident schools, whereas Prepatech High Schools is 1.5. In reclassification, again, you see the same pattern that the resident schools are, is, median is outperforming Prepatech High School. So here we see 19 of 20 resident schools with a better reclassification rate than Prepatech's. The median for the resident schools was 15.5 compared to Preppa's 3.8. And this is 1920. And then lastly, in both CAS, PLA and math, we see the resident schools percentage of students meeting and exceeding standards outperforming Prepatech highs. In ELA specifically, the median resident school met and exceed percentage is 51.56% compared to Preppa's 24.47. And in math, same story. Oh, in ELA, that translates to 18 of 20 resident schools outperforming the charter school. In math, 19 of 20 resident schools are outperforming the charter school. The median performance for met and exceeded percentage in math for resident schools is 19.62 compared to 3.26 Prepatech's. nineteen point six two compared to three point two six of Prepatech's meeting and exceeding standards in math. So in summary, what we see is that in the majority of the categories, ELA, math, suspension, reclassification, CAS, ELA and math of students meeting and exceeding standards, we see that the resident schools, majority of them are outperforming the charter school with the available data. I wanted to share that for your consideration. Thank you, Dr. Perry.
Board members, I have not been before you for a while, but have stood before you numerous occasions, and I absolutely detest to ask you to support a recommendation to close a charter school. It's never easy, but I'm here to assure you today, as we've assured you in the past, that we stand ready and experienced to support students and families if that is the decision of the board today. We ask you to support the CDE recommendation, as well as the previous vote of the LAUSD Board of Education. Thank you so much for your time, and we'll be here and available for any questions you might have for us. Thank you so much, Vice President Strauss.
Thank you, Los Angeles Unified Charter School Division Team. So we will now open the phone line for our public comment queue. So members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so. So let's put the slide up now that we will be using for public comment. When you call in, we're going to ask you to state your name and affiliation for the record, and remember to turn down your speaker volume of your computer if you're following the live feed, because otherwise we'll hear an echo. You are going to have one minute. We do remind you to please be respectful, and at this time, all comments are related to the Prepatech Los Angeles High School charter item. And now I'm going to ask the Spanish translator to read the, to translate the instructions in Spanish for our callers.
Buenos dias. In estos momentos comenzarán los comentarios públicos. El número de teléfono es el siete uno dos, siete siete cero, cuatro nueve uno siete, y el código de acceso es el cuatro seis siete, nueve cero siete uno. Por favor, cuando sea su turno, un operador le piderá en inglés que diga su nombre y afiliación, y que comience su intervención. Por favor, diga, mi nombre es, represento a, y necesito un traductor. Su tiempo comenzará cuando empiece.
Muchas gracias. So now we're going to open up for public comments. Do we have any public items on the Prepatech Los Angeles High School charter renewal?
Yes, we have public comment. Caller, please
Go ahead.
Caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Good morning. This is Walter Guzman. I'm a resource specialist teacher at Alta Public Schools, Prepatech Los Angeles High School. I would like to take this opportunity to request that Prepatech Los Angeles High School be renewed for another five years due to several reasons. Prepatech is a school that educates the whole child using the international baccalaureate curriculum. There are no other schools in the southeast Los Angeles area that offer this international program that educates students to be inquirers, which is a skill set that is needed in the future information economy. This mindset is needed for many of tomorrow's leaders, innovators, and thinkers. The education that is given at Prepatech High School trains many students to be better thinkers, that will be better overall for our future economy. Many of these students come to Prepatech High School to earn college credit, experience small class sizes, and to develop lifelong relationships with both peers and staff, an advantage that other high schools in the area don't offer. The progress is shown in the way more students in the area graduate from Prepatech High School and go on to good universities and colleges.
Thank you.
I request, please renew Prepatech Los Angeles High School for another five years.
Caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
My name is Mark Nolan. I'm a retired school administrator of thirty years, and I am now working with the Alta School District. In my present position as an assistant principal, I've had the opportunity to observe a team of educators throughout the district that are dedicated to the academic growth and social awareness of our students. Our fledgling IB program provides this to a group of students that normally would not have a program of this stature, and this was, this was accomplished with a balanced budget and a required reserve. Alter leadership understands the concept of investing in our students now, and we're act, and that we're actually investing in their future. Thank you for listening to our petition for renewal of Prepatech High School.
Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hello, Barry Baxter, Superintendent Alta Public Schools, retired. The IB diploma program offered by Prepatech High School far outweighs the dismal district alternative in regards to success in reaching higher level education. Prepatech High School was designed to include the IB diploma program to allow students of this underserved community a proven gateway to success at the college level. Prepatech's current graduation rate of ninety-seven percent far outperformed district schools of the same service area, who averaged only eighty point six percent last year. Without access to proven approaches of the IB diploma program, the students of this community are fated to receive a typical district education that is evidentially lack of adequate preparation for success in higher level education. The charter renewal must be approved to ensure the successful pathway to higher education for the students of this community. Thank you, board.
Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Are you there, caller?
What number is it?
We need translation, I believe.
Ah, sí, por favor, me diga su nombre y la relación del estudiante o de la escuela.
Sí, me escucha.
Hello.
We can hear you, caller.
Okay, no lo podemos escuchar. Tengo una pregunta, señor. Si, quiero te comenzar. Tiene, hello.
What's, what's the phone number you're talking to?
The last, the last four numbers of this call are two five two eight.
Okay, that's me. Thank you. My name is Alejandro Muñoz, and the information regarding the IB program is completely incorrect. There are schools surrounding our school that have maybe five, six hundred seniors, of which maybe twenty are IB students. So it is in no way the same as the program that we offer, where about eighty percent of the students are IB. So there, there is no place for these students to go if they do not renew this program. Please renew it. Thank you.
Hello, caller. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hello, board members. My name is Eldad Delacruz, and I'm a teacher with Prepatech Los Angeles High School. I want to let you know we offer rigorous curriculum to students to prepare them for college. Our team of dedicated teachers have done their best to ensure students apply their knowledge, skills necessary to be successful citizens of the world. Our international baccalaureate program is unique in that it teaches our students how to be critical thinkers, open-minded on global issues, risk-takers, caring, inquires, balanced, knowledgeable communicators and principals, skills that no, not all neighboring schools are equipped with. Inter, many students of our senior class have been accepted to best universities in the nation, such as John, John Hopkins University, Duke, Pepperdine, Berkeley, and USC, to name of few. This speaks volumes of our teachers and curriculum here at Prepatech Los Angeles High School, and our incoming students deserve the best education possible that this school offers. So please vote to renew the great school to remain open. Thank you.
Hello, caller. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Are you there, caller?
I am here. One second, please. I'm ready. Time to win and start.
Please begin now.
My name is Nestor Enrique Valencia. I'm the former council member and mayor here in the city of Bell, and I am also a former vice president of the parent advisory board for LAUSD. It is very, very saddening to see these recommendations come to this fine school. We need a school like this in the southeast. They're very dedicated professionals at this school. I understand the legislation that puts forth the rules and regs for protecting the public interest and the interest of the students. This is not the case in this school. What I mean by that is, this is not the reason to end a charter. This school has its challenges like any other school, any other public school. I could also tell you that this school is very engaged in our community, and it is a prime example of this
Thank you, caller. Your time is up.
Thank you so much for your time.
Hello, caller. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Are you there, caller?
Hi, good morning, board members. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
My name is Jeanette Montana, and I am a proud parent of a Prepatech High School student.
A caller, you're welcome to call back in. We're not certain what happened on the line. Caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, caller, we can hear you.
Good morning. My name is Maria Gonzalez, and I represent three students at Alta Public Schools. I'm the mother of three children in the Alta Public School system. My eldest, who is now a freshman at Prepatech High School, has been a part of the Alta family for the past six years. I cannot put into words the satisfaction and relief we felt as a community, knowing that our children now have the opportunity to have the complete academic experience in the only school, the school family some have known. The added benefits of having an elementary, middle school, and now a high school with an IB learner program is something unique to this community. Part of LAUSD's mission statement is that it will be a progressive global leader in education, providing a dynamic and inspiring learning experience where all students graduate ready for success. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, you have before you the opportunity to prove this mission statement true today. The renewal of this high school is an investment in this community. Doing so ensures
Thank you, caller. Your time is up.
...successful future for our kids. Thank you.
Hello, caller. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
My name is Amelia Nguyen, and I teach language and literature. This is my third year at Prepatech and tenth year in education, and I want to promote this school for renewal. Bringing IB to this particular community is a huge undertaking. I hold a teaching credential and master's in education from UC Davis. Go Aggies! But even with my previous training, it has taken years of work and immense, immense financial investment to synthesize the many facets that make up an IB education in a culturally responsive way that is specific to the needs of our students. When I started at Prepa, we struggled to retain skilled teachers due to the pay scale differences from surrounding districts. Now that we are comparable, our teachers are staying and learning the IB framework. I can say with assurance that IB education here at Prepa is amazing, and Prepatech is the scrappiest school I have ever seen. Our test scores only show where we are starting, and I love the IB, IB framework because it aims to serve the students where they are and help them become global, thoughtful, and reflective citizens. We have learned so much over the last five years, and the amount of growth I've seen in both staff and students is immeasurable.
Thank you, caller. Your time is up.
Thank you so much for your time.
Hello, caller. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Are you there, caller?
Hello?
You're there.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, caller.
Good morning. My name is Viviana Matamoros. I am a community member for the past thirty years and also work at Prepatech Middle School. I am here to ask for your support to renew one of Alta Public's sister schools, Prepatech High School, as we have become officially one of the first international baccalaureate K through twelve school in LA district that is free completely to every single student that attends our school. What does this mean? For one, that the investment that the school has done on facilities, IB train teachers, and other requirements for this program was a great investment, and it is starting to show with positive results. We need to allow the school to grow to its full potential and to keep in mind that great schools are not just built in five years. We are starting to bloom, and it shows in the high percentage of graduating students going to UC and Cal State. Here, every student is offered an opportunity to be an IB student and dream big, so they strive to, for a great future and are able to have the American dream, a great education for success. Our kids and future generations for our community to start to have an IB school just as any wealth community, and this is what we are asking for, for you guys to renew this school because our community deserves
Thank you, caller. Your time is
...have waited for this. Thank you.
Hello, caller. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hi, my name is Marissa Ruscol, and I serve as the expanded learning program manager with the Alta Public Schools. Prepatech surrounds its students with support, love, and guidance daily, creating an environment that students can grow and flourish, with dedicated faculty and staff that keep the needs of our families at the forefront of every decision. We invested time and resources to ensure that all students are provided with quality learning experiences and opportunities to develop personally and academically. Our IB program is one of four in LAUSD and brings a unique and special learning opportunity to students by preparing them for success in their next step to college and career, with a high graduation and acceptance rate to a four-year colleges and university, the highest in our community. Prepatech is creating true global citizens with the skills and tools needed to impact not only in the southeast LA community, but the world, because Prepatech students have the pride, the rigor, the leadership, and the love for their family and community to be the change. Please consider the renewal of Prepatech High School as not only an investment into the future of our students, but as an investment into our community. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Your time is up. Hello, caller. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. We can hear you.
Hello? Sí, buenos dias. Me escucha? Sí, le escucho. Buenos dias. Por favor, puede dar su nombre? Me escucha bien? Puede dar su nombre y la relación del estudiante o de la escuela, por favor?
Sí, mi nombre es Marta Barajas, y tengo dos estudiantes en Prepatech. Ah, una está en el
She has two of her kids.
Ajá. Y la otra está en el nueve. Y la razón de mi llamada es porque yo les estoy suplicando a los miembros del board que, por favor, renueven el contrato de Prepatech High School, porque mis hijos han estado ahí
Okay. Me espero un momento, por favor. She's got two kids at the school, and she would like to request that the school be renewed. Siga, por favor.
Sí, el nivel de aprendizaje que mis hijos han tenido en Prepatech High School es de alta calidad. Es como si lo tuvieran en una escuela privada, y realmente si ustedes no aprueban la renovación del contrato para mí sería terrible. Es como truncar que mis hijos llegan a la universidad porque ellos están teniendo una excelente educación. Mis hijos tienen pura sal y un programa
Me espero un momentito, por favor. She said that her kids are receiving an excellent education there at the school. Tiene más?
Sí, y realmente pues estoy desesperada porque Si, y realmente pues estoy desesperada porque pues ahora que sé que no están renovando les pido, les explico que por favor ayuden a que mis hijos lleguen a la universidad aprobando a PrepaTech High School.
Yeah, please, she would like to say that she wants the school to be renewed so her kids can go to a university.
Yo viajo desde Long Beach hasta Huntington Park todos los días.
She travels from Long Beach to Huntington every day.
Por once años, hasta que pasó eso la pandemia.
Siga, por favor.
Si, por favor, yo les suplico, son excelentes maestros de alta calidad, excelente personal. Y realmente que escuchen la voz de los padres, no, de la gente que está en contra. Realmente yo estoy muy contenta con PrepaTech High School y les suplico.
Okay, me espero un momento, por favor. Ajá, she just says that the teachers are excellent and please listen to the parents.
That's time, thank you. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time begins now.
Good morning board members, my name is Linda Vargas. As an Alta Public Schools employee, I've had the privilege to work alongside dedicated staff but more importantly, our students and families. Our students and families are so committed and eager to excel and learn. The rigor offered by our IB program is available to each and every one of our students. It is not exclusive to the families that can pay for it. Why should our children not have the right to this program? Tuition for another K-12 continuing school in the Santa Monica area is approximately $21,000 per year. Ninety-five percent of our families are socially, economically disadvantaged and would be unable to afford giving their children that type of education. The early investment made for our new building early on is evident within the PrepaTech High School hallways where our students find teachers and staff that encourage, motivate, and push them past fears into greater heights. Last year, our graduating class had an 89.3% graduation rate. I urge you to renew PrepaTech High School and allow this cocoon to flourish into the bright and beautiful butterfly our community needs and deserves. Thank you for your time.
Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time begins now.
Good morning, my name is Julia Longo and I am proud to be the diploma program coordinator for PrepaTech. We are one of only a handful of IB schools in the LA area and there is no other continuing school in the area which provides continuity of the IB curriculum from its primary years and middle years programs to the diploma program in grades 11 through 12. Unlike most schools, we do this at zero cost to our families. This rigorous educational opportunity enables students to enter four-year colleges with tuition credits equivalent up to one year. Not only our families, but the nationally and internationally respected WASC and IB organizations have attested that we are providing a quality education to our students. Test scores do not demonstrate what is truly being achieved at PrepaTech. The renewal of the PrepaTech charter is in the best interest of our historically disadvantaged students. Thank you.
Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one moment, your time begins now.
Hello?
We can hear you caller.
Okay, hi, my name is Naomi Cuevas. I am the mother of a proud student who attends the high school. As a proud parent, I am imploring the renewal of our high school. I have firsthand experienced the growth that my daughter has had academically. I moved my daughter from the Downey Unified to give her the opportunity of this unique IB program this school offers. This IB program this school offers is not offered anywhere else which I looked. PrepaTech Los Angeles is an important space in our low-income community to have a chance to a better education, to a brighter future. Let us remember, our students are the future of this country. Therefore, require the best education that PrepaTech offers them. It will be crucial and devastating to our community and a great loss if our children were to lose the opportunity. Please, consider the renewal for PrepaTech High School. Thank you very much for your time.
Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time begins now.
Hello, buenos dias, interprete, por favor.
Por favor diga su nombre y afiliación y no olvide pausar después de cada frase para poder traducir.
Si, muchas gracias. Buenos dias, mi nombre es María Campos.
Good morning, my name is María Campos.
Soy madre de una estudiante de PrepaTech High School.
I am a mother of a student at PrepaTech High School.
Estoy llamando para dar apoyo a la escuela y pedirles a ustedes, miembros de la comisión, que por favor den el permiso de continuar High School.
I'm calling for the approval and for the renewal of PrepaTech High School.
Para mí, PrepaTech, y para mi hija, y para toda la comunidad, es muy importante que continúe ejerciendo.
For me and my daughter, PrepaTech High School is very important for the school to continue.
Es lo que necesita la comunidad también, no solo por mi hija, solo por los demás estudiantes.
This is what our community needs, not just for my daughter but for the rest of the students.
Tiene excelentes maestros.
They have excellent teachers.
Tiene este, un programa, el IB, que es importantísimo para la ir a.
They have the IB program, which is extremely important.
Para mí y para la comunidad es muy importante que continúe, por favor, les pido. Les otorguen el permiso para seguir preparando a nuestros jóvenes.
For me and for the community, the renewal of this school is extremely important so that they continue to prepare our students.
Para ir a la universidad, es su futuro, el futuro está en los jóvenes.
So that they can go to the university, this is their future. The future is within our youth.
The time is up.
Su tiempo se ha acabado.
Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time begins now.
Si, buenos dias.
Buenos dias, por favor diga su nombre y afiliación y no olvide pausar para poder traducir.
Okay, mi nombre es Esther García, represento a la PrepaTech. Estoy agradecida primeramente con Dios y a PrepaTech por ayudar a mi hija a sacar el mejor potencial en ella.
I am thankful with God and for PrepaTech for helping my daughter and getting her best potential.
En cuanto al aprendizaje se refiere.
With regards to her education.
Para mí, PrepaTech es una institución donde el fundador, maestros, y demás personal se esfuerzan para que los estudiantes den lo mejor.
For me, PrepaTech, all of the school staff and teachers provide their best efforts so that students provide their best efforts.
Nos preparan muy bien a enfrentar la vida y a su ingreso a la universidad. Y tienen un alto porcentaje de alumnos ingresando a la universidad, que es lo que me motiva a mí a mandar a mi hija ahí.
Teachers prepare students very well for life and for university, which is what concerns me the most. I want my daughter to go to a university and they do a great job at it.
Y sería una lástima y una pérdida lamentable que les corten las alas a los estudiantes cerrando la PrepaTech. Por favor, les suplico que no la cierren y renueven el contrato.
It would be a terrible loss for students if PrepaTech High School was not renewed. So I please beg that you renew PrepaTech High School.
Mi hija está súper motivada por su ingreso a la universidad y yo estoy muy contenta con las oportunidades que ella tiene en esta institución.
My daughter is very excited for what is to come with regards to universities and I am very excited for her as well. So if PrepaTech High School closes down, this would be a big loss for her.
Agradecida pues porque.
That's time caller.
Ya se acabó su tiempo.
Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time begins now. Are you there caller? Is the caller with the number 2089 on the line?
Yes, hi, my name is Letizia Avonal. I have a student at PrepaTech and I would like to say to you to consider the renewal for the burnout of PrepaTech so they can keep teachers and workers there. Their teachers are amazing and they provide good work for the kids. They help my kids through the work. And if you dismiss the opportunity, the kids are gonna go like unfortunate and I would like you to keep their dreams up. I would like you to renew their permit, please, thank you so much.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time begins now.
Hello?
We can hear you caller, please begin.
My name is Jancy Barozzo. I have two students at PrepaTech High School and a junior high. I would like to for you guys to trust your heart and renew the school. Don't close it, we still need the school open. My daughter is doing great, they help her a lot. They have good teachers, good staff, and they have control over the kids. Please renew the school for five years more, don't close it. Trust your heart and donate the students without school. Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time begins now.
Hello, uh, hello. My name is Jimmy Luna. I am a senior student from PrepaTech High School and I've been with it for all the four years. And I can tell you with confidence that the school is worth keeping open. And you know, I'm not exactly sure what the situation here and I don't know what it's costing but I can tell you one thing and that's that you can't put a price on education that builds leadership in human beings. You see, PrepaTech is an IB school and it's different than the rest of the schools and that's what makes it great. Students are shown they are more than a score in a system and they are shown they are human beings that can change the world for the better. Uh, PrepaTech must be kept open as the choice is bigger than me and my friends and all of us, really. As it's the type of choice that, the type of decision that decides where our future in this country lies. The decision that changes our future. Do we want a society who advances and grows or do we want a society that is never willing to change? Especially its educational system. Today, we are deciding what type of schools we want our children to graduate from and stop being children to become adults. Closing the school that teaches our children what it means to be an adult and what it means to be a good human being, what it means to contribute to society, is the wrong decision. You can't build a country out of workers, you need leaders.
Thank you caller, your time is up.
No matter the cost, you can't put a price on the private.
Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time begins now.
Hi, my name is Andrea Gaviz and I'm a senior at PrepaTech High School. And Prepa has helped me in so many ways and the teachers here are amazing and they do everything in their power to see us succeed. I am now going to graduate and I'm going to college. Prepa has changed me and I see myself growing as a person. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time begins now.
This is Catlin O'Halloran with the Charter Schools Development Center. CSDC supports the renewal of PrepaTech. New charter schools often struggle financially as they get established. Our review of the school's current financials show that they now appear to have sound fiscal footing. CSDC commends PrepaTech on achieving authorization for the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program because it's a rarity in low-income areas. As a new school, PrepaTech has only one year of academic state indicator data and we know this is not much to go on. Renewal would let the school establish a track record and provide continuity rather than forcing a school change on students already highly affected by the pandemic. We also want to alert you that we're seeing a disturbing trend where authorizers rely solely on comparisons of schools to state averages. This sets up schools like PrepaTech, schools that bring in many students with low baselines, to appear poor performing irrespective of actual student growth. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time begins now.
Hi, my name is Robert Bates and I teach both history and world religions here at PrepaTech. This is a wonderful school. It allows students to get college credit while in high school in two-year-long programs like the ones I teach. And these programs are coordinated with all the other classes through a theory of knowledge class in which they learn how to learn. And if, it would be a shame if the school is closed because I see so many young people moving on to college, moving on to very good colleges because of this program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time begins now.
Good morning board members, my name is Marcy Mesa. I'm a proud staff member at the PrepaTech High School who started off as a parent volunteer over ten years ago. I've lived in this community for, and nearby communities for over forty years of my life. I just want to remind everyone the reason charter schools exist in the first place is due to the schools in our communities failing us and our children for decades until some parents and teachers who actually cared about the students decided to take matters into their own hands and create better schools for our communities. My kids, my oldest daughters are over twenty years old, attend the fanning public schools nearby and I volunteered them. What I saw in my volunteer experience was that the LAUSD didn't care about the students they were appointed to serve. After hearing about charter schools, I was so relieved that my children would finally be attending schools that were safe and actually cares about their students. The International Baccalaureate Program here teaches positive character building skills as well as has a vigorous curriculum to help our children achieve their dreams of graduating and attending universities. Thank you.
Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time begins now.
Hello, my name is Anthony Quinones, I'm a teacher at PrepaTech. Uh, PrepaTech is unique. Most charter schools just find a building for their students or they rent something. PrepaTech went the extra mile to find a facility, make that a home for our students. This should not be the undoing of their program. We've improved our finances in recent years and frankly, even though students can go to other schools, they cannot achieve the same experience that they get with us. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time begins now. Are you there caller?
Hi, yes I am, hello. Good morning, members of the State Board of Education. My name is Dean Higley and I am the science teacher at PrepaTech High School. I'm calling to urge you to reauthorize PrepaTech High School. As a science teacher, having a functioning lab station is essential for conducting labs safely and correctly. Labs are the practical application of science concepts and provide hands-on opportunities to make science come to life. Uh, prior to working at Alta Public Schools, I worked at three other charter schools and in none of those was there a functioning lab station. If students needed water for a lab, they would have to go to the restroom to go get that water. Not a good situation. However, at PrepaTech, fully functional lab stations were installed. This shows Mr. Reyes's and Alta Public Schools dedication to providing world-class education to the PrepaTech High School students. Alta Public Schools is deeply concerned with making sure students have every opportunity available to increase learning and they put their money where their mouth is to assure this. Thank you for your time, have a good day.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time begins now.
Good morning, my name is Michael Jubas, speaking on behalf of the California Teachers Association. CTA supports CDE's recommendation to not renew PrepaTech Los Angeles High. While CDE's position matches the local district's decision to. While CDE's position matches the local district's decision to not renew the petition, there is still concern that the CDE's approach to renewals of SBE authorized charters is undermining the authority granted by the state legislator to the local district during the renewal process. In December 2020, the Board of LAUSD unanimously voted to deny Prepa Tech's renewal position and the district staff laid out several findings that supported denying the renewal. Additionally, LAUSD submitted a notice of violation to Prepa Tech in October 2020. CTA believes that under AB 1505, the legislature intended for it to be the local district's duty to conduct a thorough and comprehensive review of these renewals.
Thank you caller, your time is up. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you caller.
Hi, my name is Elsa Ochoa. I'm the proud one and only assistant principal of Prepa Tech High School and I recommend our charter school renewal. Our team is committed to providing a quality education too and narrowing the educate, the achievement gap for our students. Last year, our graduation rate was eighty-nine point three percent. Meanwhile, the state was eighty-six point six percent. This number illustrates the hard work our teachers do to scaffold and personalize our students' learning in our small class sizes. Our educators are invested in this community and equity for our students who are predominantly Latino and low-income. It is important to note that our school has primarily spent its budget on facilities and personnel. This shows that we are person-centered and invest in the future. We can fully remedy our financial situation, but you cannot fix the repercussions of a denial today. Reminder, we are in a global pandemic. Closing our school will devastate four hundred Prepa Tech staff and students along with all of our Alta students who are supporting their education with us. Thank you.
Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hi, this is Dr. Sharisa Vitter, Professor IB Education. According to the IB school site, California has only a handful of continuum IB programs. Prepa Tech is the culmination of this program and the incorporation of the CB will make it the first in the state. The core of the International Baccalaureate is learning how to learn, which gives students agency over their own learning. IB students are known to be problem solvers, critical thinkers, making them successful for university or the workforce. As for university acceptance, Caltech has an eight percent acceptance rate but accepts twenty-three point eight percent of IB students. University of California, Los Angeles has an eighteen percent acceptance rate but forty-one point four percent of IB students. University of California, San Diego with a thirty-five point nine percent acceptance rate takes sixty point seven percent of IB students. Since there is a continuum and Prepa Tech is the culmination, 2020, we looked at PYP schools to find a greater impact on social-emotional learning. NYPD students are thirty-four percent more likely to take advanced courses in high school and California's diploma programs are serving low-income students.
Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Are you their caller? Caller with a phone number ending with nine three one four, this is your turn. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Is it me?
It is you.
Oh, hi, my name is Maurice Nicholson. Uh, I'm a parent. Um, I have a daughter that I planned on going to Prepa Tech next semester. So I'm just hoping the school gets renewed. Um, I want to say thank you and have a great day.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Um, hi, my name is Sarah Tuxbury. I'm a Marin County resident and I want to say that your review process for Prepa Tech and the two other SBE authorized charters is broken, inconsistent, and prejudicial. You selectively use or ignore AB 1505. Ms. Sayah said yesterday that the CDE did not use the district reports at all, so I don't understand why you make them do a review which is very expensive and wastes district resources. Um, you approved the Ross Valley Charter, which is really no different than Prepa Tech. They both rely heavily on debt. So I'd like to ask you to pause your reviews and fix your process and make it more consistent and fair. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Are you their caller?
Hello, is this the caller three nine one six?
This is three nine one six, yes.
Hello, my name is Kay Reinhardt. I'm a special ed teacher at Prepa Tech Middle School. I had the privilege to be the DIS counselor for special ed students at the high school. This school is more committed to students and their progress than any school I've worked with in thirty years. The IB program offers them opportunities that are not afforded to students in this area and I urge you to please consider special ed students and all students in this area and to keep Prepa Tech open for another five years. I've never worked with more committed educators and I'm just in shock that it would even be considered to close this school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hi, my name is Yvonne Zuneja. I'm the parent of the student at Prepa Tech High School who have attended Alta Schools since they first opened. As an educator myself, education is very important to me and my family. Finding a quality high school is a very difficult task in this community. Finding one is a blessing and Prepa Tech has been a blessing for my community and my family. It's a, it's exceptional IB program has prepared my children for higher education. The teachers and staff are amazing. Consequently, it was the dream of Mr. Reyes and all of those who made this possible that have worked so hard to give our children this blessing. Please, I ask that you will please keep the school open and be part of the success of our children and our community. Otherwise, you would be showing us that you don't really care to give us the opportunity to give our children higher education. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hello, uh, my name is Elias Garnona and I'm a senior and I just want to say that I, this school right here is, has given me the opportunity to not only grow from education but also in life as well and I, I can only, I can't imagine uh, you know, this school being closed down for future generations that have been in my position, Latino in this community, to not have this opportunity such as myself. And this school has given me an opportunity to go to places that I could never have imagined back then. I always imagined I would have to go to community college and et cetera, but now I'm going to Cal State LA and going on to even a internship for NASA and et cetera. And I honestly just, the school has given me things like TOK, which has allowed me to uh, question and also view life in a different perspective and different manner of being as well. And the teachers beyond care for us as students as well and not only for our education, but also for our personal lives as well. And I, I wish and I hope that the school can be renewed so that others in the future in my position can also be, have this opportunity as well. Please, I beg you to. I beg you, please help me.
Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes caller, we can hear you. Please begin.
Hi, good morning. My name is Yesena Guerrero. I am a proper parent of a student in our sister school, Academia Moderna Elementary. He and my family moved from Los Angeles to Los Angeles to be able to have our son attend a school that offers the IB primary program. Even though he has been doing school, we assume we have been pleased with his, with his academic achievements and progress. And may I add, he has been blessed with one of the most amazing kindergarten teachers, Mrs. Bailey. I would like for my son to have the opportunity of having an IB education from elementary all the way up to his senior year of high school. Please don't shatter our dreams of a higher education in a low-income area. That is so well-needed. That is one of the reasons why our founder, Mr. Javier Reyes, has invested in our programs that touch an early age for our kids so they can have a higher chance of, of success and become who they want to be in life, full of confidence and very knowledgeable and nothing less. I am asking to please renew our school, our community, parents, and most importantly, our students, our future generations are having a better education for.
Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hi, my name is Matthew Willis and I'm a science teacher at Prepa Tech High School. I'm calling to support the renewal of the school. Like the caller said before, a, a science lab is necessary for our students to obtain that edge over students in LAUSD and other charter schools. And with the completion of our new science lab, we now have all the necessary materials for our students to be successful academically in the sciences. So I would encourage you to please renew Prepa Tech High School and support our students developing science as they continue to conduct research and do other experiments that will give them an edge over the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Are you their caller?
Hello, yes, I am here. Hi, my name is Glenda Adiman. I'm one of the directors here at Alta Public Schools and I want to urge the board to renew Prepa Tech Los Angeles. Um, the CDE and LAUSD presenters have brought up concerns about Prepa Tech's historical financials. I want to affirm that our leadership staff takes the financial health of the organization very seriously and we need often to discuss our financial situation and how to improve our bottom line. You can see this commitment in that our financials are improving rapidly. We have had to make hard decisions about what to cut to improve our financials without hurting our students' education. The CDE and LAUSD have stated that we do not demonstrative, demonstratively show the ability to manage our financials. However, I believe this to be untrue. We have contracted with financial experts who work with many other successful charter schools to support us. In addition, our two other schools do not demonstrate similar financial issues. Thus, there is capacity to run a fiscally solvent program. Again, I urge the board to renew Prepa Tech Los Angeles.
Thank you caller, your time is up.
To continue providing a much-needed education. Thank you.
Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hello, my name is Lauren and I'm a senior at Prepa Tech and I strongly urge you to renew our school. Someone mentioned the closure of the school is in the best interest of the students and as a student, I strongly disagree. IB program, while groundbreaking and innovative, has historically been for students in affluent areas. But Prepa Tech is bringing this program to underserved youth and is providing us with opportunities we could never imagine. I never thought I could meet with official United Nations ambassadors all the way in New York or receive the Congressional Gold Medal, the only youth award provided by the United States Congress. And I never thought I would end up, I'm an elite top twenty school, Duke University, and Prepa Tech prepared me for all of those things and so much more. If the main reason why you don't support the reopening of the school is money, then I respectfully ask you to reevaluate what you value in a school. Prepa Tech is lifting up our community and there are no schools like it. Our community needs Prepa Tech. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Hello caller, are you there?
What number?
The ending number is three four one five.
Hi, good morning. My name is Sylvia Nicholson. I'm the office manager of Prepa Tech High School. I have the privilege to be working here at Prepa Tech High School. It's a great school. Prepa Tech High School prepares our students for the best education. Our community needs this school. We have an IB program that no other school has. Prepa Tech IB programs matter in this community. Our students and family are very happy at Prepa Tech High School. We work hard to receive the Diploma Program started for our students at Prepa Tech. Please give us the renewal. Our community really needs this school to stay open for another five years. It would, it would be a great loss if this school is not renewed. Please let us continue to give the great education to our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hello, good morning. My name is Gabrielle Cruz. I'm a senior at Prepa Tech Los Angeles High School. I would like to request that Prepa Tech stay open simply because of the opportunities that are available to us there. The IB program that is not offered at any other school near me and many others has taught me many skills and advanced my learning enough so that I feel confident in my journey to higher-level education. Even though this course is rigorous, my teachers have been able to support me and many of my peers in their struggles. After my four years of attending Prepa Tech, I can confidently say that I have never met my dedicated and caring teachers. They've gone above and beyond for their students even during this pandemic. I'm now going to a four-year university in which most of my tuition is covered by scholarships. This is thanks to the opportunities available at my high school. I will be forever grateful for this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hello, are you speaking with phone number seven six one nine?
We are caller.
Uh, I'm not starting yet, but I think this would go a lot smoother if you just said the last four digits of each number for, uh, every caller.
Caller, your time is already ticking, so please begin your message.
Well, one of the core values of the IB program is communication and many of my students brought up sentiments that the translator was misrepresenting significant messages from our Spanish-speaking population. I thought that should be communicated. Um, I'm starting now with my main point. That's a minute right now. I'm the math teacher for the IB program.
Caller, you have forty-four seconds remaining.
With the standard LAUSD H high school curriculum, uh, which is severely limited in scope, unimaginative, and neglecting a great deal of extremely important skills not offered in the course I teach for mathematics. If you disband this charter, you're leading a future generation on a, on a bleak and dismal path towards darkness. Uh, I'm a data scientist with five years' experience in the aerospace industry and a software developer. I'm aware of the skills LAUSD has done a terrible job placing into the high school curriculum. Programming is non-existent. Nobody does any data research. My math students chose investigative topics uh, independently and they created twelve to twenty-page reports incorporating actual data collection, analysis of their results. And they made their own inferences and conclusions about many topics including coronavirus, deforestation, uh, crime rates in LA. So how many high school students are you testing on their ability to creatively apply mathematics and interpret the complex variations inherent in real-world data? That's my question for you.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Caller ending with seven three four nine, are you on the line?
Uh, yes, hi, hi, uh, good morning. Uh, my name is Jose Mendota and I'm a, a math teacher at Prepa Tech High School. I'm calling in to voice my support in keeping the school open because of one major aspect and that is our school promotes growth. In the two years that I have been working at the school, I have seen growth in all areas, uh, from my students, teachers, administrators, and myself. The school actively promotes growth in several different ways, but some of them include the IB curriculum, having high expectations to both students and staff and most importantly, provides the resources, tools, and support needed to advance the individual and, and learner to that higher level. Uh, the school is on a course for greatness and by closing it down now will be a disservice to our community. Uh, please vote to keep Prepa Tech High School open. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Caller, ending with two seven four three, your time begins now.
My name is Lauren, and I'm-
Are you there caller?
I wanted to share the closing ID programs are not a hill, Hawthorne, and Ascianta Heights. These are all more than an hour away.
All callers that are on the line for public comment for Prepatech Los Angeles High, please know that when it is your time to speak for public comment, that the line will tell you that you are being unmuted, and that is your prompt to begin your public comment. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Caller ending with five three five three, are you on the line? Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Caller ending-
Good morning, board member. My name is Karina Gongora. I am a special education teacher at Prepatech Los Angeles High School. I am also a proud team member and in support of the renewal of Prepatech Los Angeles High School for a few reasons. One, Prepatech Los Angeles High School teachers are leaders who are making a positive and transformative impact in the lives of our students in this community. Prepatech Los Angeles High School is unique in that it offers students in the southeast community an opportunity to experience academic learning and personal growth, as well as global social responsibility through the IB program. The IB program acknowledges the changing histories of students, barriers to learning, and assessments are not restricted to those with a statement of need. Inclusion is important, and inclusion is facilitated in the culture of collaboration, mutual respect, support, and problem-solving involving our whole school community. As a special education teacher, I'm proud to say that the majority of our senior class students are enrolled in community colleges or in the process of attending a trade school. Students are participating in job readiness for-
Caller, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Am I on?
Caller, ending in three eight nine five, it is your turn.
Thank you. My name is Uriel Quinones, and I teach Theory of Knowledge. Board members, our at-promised students are now at risk of losing their school. While other states argue about the policies whether to include, uh, critical race theory in school curriculum, IB schools such as Prepatech High School offer courses such as Theory of Knowledge, which provide the opportunity for students to reflect on the nature of knowledge itself. These are our future leaders. The resilience of our students and faculty, coupled with our high college acceptance graduation rate, should overshadow the physical numbers that have already been addressed. We're not asking for a bailout. We're asking for a renewal of a school. I ask this highly-educated board to remember your training, your schooling, your pedagogy. At the end of the day, we should be listening to our students and community. Do not let our students be forced to attend California public schools that have gone from first to worst. All students deserve equal access to high-quality education. We are providing that for our students. Look at our grad rates, look at our college acceptance rates, but most importantly, look at the community we are building.
A point of clarification for callers who want to make public comment. We are able to see if somebody is calling in multiple times from the same number. Um, it is our policy that each caller has one minute for public comment, and we ask that you respect that. Caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record.
Excuse me for a minute. Let's have our Spanish translator repeat those instructions about calling in only once and that we can see the number. That's important.
Por favor, cuando marquen solamente, solamente marquen una vez, y solamente tienen un minuto para dar su comentario público.
Gracias. Okay, go ahead Carolyn.
Thank you. Caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Caller two five three two, it is your turn.
Good afternoon, my name is Isabel Contreras, and the reason that I am calling this is to support, um, Prepatech High School. I've been listening to all the, um, comments that they have been making, and I know that LAUSD does have schools to offer our families, but unfortunately, our families want an IB school, an IB school that has been open in our community for once and is giving our kids an opportunity to success, to a great future. We want the students to understand that being prepared for life matters. It's not just what you are being taught through books. As a community member, for so many years within Wana Park, Canyon Park, and Bell, I can tell you, we've been waiting for so many years for a great school. And now that we have this school that is a startup school, has only been around for a couple of years, you want to take it away? Why not support a school for once? Why not be behind the school and make it better? This is making a change in our community for once.
Thank you caller, your time is up. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Caller ending in two nine six three, this is your turn.
Hi, good morning. I am Angel Calimon, and I'm a proud candidate for Prepatech Los Angeles. I'm calling on behalf of the Prepatech High School. I truly, I'm sorry. I truly believe that high school is in growing our community. Prepatech High School is the only IB school in our region. Our students deserve a school with an IB program. This is a great opportunity for them, and it will be, it will better prepare them for an after-high school education. I ask you please consider the Prepatech High School with you all for a better future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you caller, thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name is Alexis Sanchez, and I am an eleventh grader at Prepatech High School. I am speaking today to ask for the renewal of my school. I have been a part of Alta Public Schools since I was five years old. Attending since kinder, this school has changed my life for the better. I have been offered numerous amount of opportunities that no other school could provide for me. I have been given so much support from the teachers that I am beyond grateful for. At Prepatech, I feel happy and genuinely cared for. I know all my teachers have my best interests at heart. I have learned so many things because of Prepa. The learning environment motivates me to become better and grow each and every day. I am currently enrolled in the IBDP program. This program is a two-year course that will provide so many benefits for my future. If the renewal to my school is not granted, many of us will not be able to finish our DP course, since it is a two-year course throughout junior and senior year. Please give the renewal to Prepatech High School. There's people against the renewal, but they have no idea how it would affect us. They have not seen the help and assistance Prepatech provides for us. They have not seen the doors Prepatech has opened for us. Our community wouldn't be the same without it. I ask from the bottom of my heart that you approve the renewal of Prepatech High School. I can't see for the least part of my life shutting down. Thank you for your-
Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Caller ending in nine three one four, this is your turn. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
My name is Ines Sandoza, and I am here today to ask you to please renew Prepatech High School. Prepatech High School's early investments have paid off, and it clearly shows in the acceptance of students that now attend great universities. My children and the community deserve a better opportunity, and Prepatech High School is here to provide that with their international baccalaureate program. Earlier, a gentleman from LAUSD Board showed that they have an extensive plan to find schools where the families and emphasize the IB program. This is much easier step than done. It would be very hard for our families to travel to Hawthorne, Ascianta Heights, and Granada Hills, where there are the other IB programs exist. I have two children, and there is no way I would be able to make that commute. There is a school in downtown LA, and it is a magnet school. And you and I know that it is very difficult to enter a magnet school. And for the record, the majority of IB families that I know are here today because they were not able to get into an IB, into a magnet program. Please renew Prepatech High School. Our kids deserve the best. Thank you for your time.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Caller ending in eight zero three three, this is your time. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hi, good morning, board members. My name is Lupin Mendez, employee of Alta Public Schools since 2009. I am here to support and ask that Prepatech be renewed. Aside from providing a rigorous IB program, we provide a safe and family-oriented environment, a place where the students feel welcomed, loved, supported, and safe. We have built great relationships with our students, parents, and community. Throughout my years with Alta, it has been a blessing to see the growth in our students in all areas. As a former LAUSD student quite some time ago, I wish I would have had the experience that our students currently have at Prepatech High and our sister schools. Hard work pays off. Along with our parents, we are extremely proud of all of our students and graduating students that were accepted to prestigious universities. If that doesn't demonstrate the dedication of teachers, leaders, administrators, staff, students, and parents, then I am at a loss of words. Without the renewal, this would be detrimental to our students, families-
Thank you caller, your time is up. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hi, my name is Gilbert Hernandez, and I am currently a junior at Prepatech. I have been with the Alta family since its sister school, Alcatraz Memorial, that first opened in 2009. The school offers a unique IB education that teaches students to seek more in their education. I strongly urge you to renew Prepatech as it encourages students to become not only better learners in the classroom, but also outside of the classroom, to become better members of society. If you shut down the school, you will be sending these kids into a, into a worse education and into probably delinquency, and you and I both don't want that. So please, I urge you to please renew Prepatech High School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Caller ending in seven three four nine, this is your turn. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Caller ending in fifty three fifty three, this is your opportunity. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now. Caller ending in seventy six one nine, your time is now.
Hi, I just wanted to say that the typical LA math course, uh, teaches things that students never use, and they get turned off by it. And, uh, the IB curriculum teaches them how to apply math to real-world situations. And I don't understand, if you're going to get rid of this school, what is the point of teaching like the regular LAUSD curriculum, which has rational roots of polynomials that no one ever uses? And a lot of students across LA just to test math because they don't ever use it for anything. But the math course in the IB program is called Applications and Interpretation, and if you're testing students on things that don't matter, well, how are you comparing apples to oranges? Because what they learn here, I've seen students do amazing things with math and solve problems that are relative to their life.
Thank you caller. Hello caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time begins now.
Hello, my name is Michelle Solarsano. I am a family teacher at Prepatech Los Angeles High School. This has been my school for the past five years, and within these years, I've seen firsthand the academic progress of the school and students. This year alone, we have seniors accepted to Cal State, UCs, and even Duke University, to name a few. What we are doing for our students is providing them with a world-class education and the academic tools to be able to be accepted to these colleges and to be ready for the whirlwind that awaits them. Our students will graduate as lifelong learners, as well as men and women of character. To see this school close will be heartbreaking for our students, staff, and community. I highly recommend that you approve Prepatech Los Angeles High School for school renewal. Thank you.
Thank you caller. That concludes our public comment for this item.
So, um, given there are no other public comments, um, I hereby close the public hearing at eleven thirty-nine AM. And I just want to thank all the callers who took the time to call in, the staff, the parents, the community, the students, um, everybody who was part of it. I think the board listened very closely, and we are now going to begin our board discussion. So first, I'd like to ask our board liaison, Subur and Ting Sung, if they would like to make some initial comments, and then following that, we'll turn to board discussion. Remember, board members, if you use the raised hand, um, I'll be sure to call on you. So thank you. So member Bur and Sung.
Thank you, Vice President Straugh. Uh, before I, um, make my comments, I think Stephanie Farland might, um, have a clarification on something from the, um, from the, um, presentations.
Oh, I just, thank you, Member Sun. I, um, had heard, and maybe I misunderstood, but, um, uh, in the charter school's presentation, when they talked about some of the struggles they had fiscally when they first started the school, um, upon, upon startup, that they didn't have any startup funds, um, but we did, uh, they did receive a five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar implementation grant, federal grant, um, that our department, um, manages. Um, and so I just wanted to clarify that, um, because I, I thought, that's what he said. Like I said, I might have misunderstood, but I wanted to put that out there, that that grant was available to them, and they applied and got that in 2016.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so, um, yeah, I, again, echoing Vice President Strauss's comments, thank you to the public who testified, especially the students and parents. Uh, it, you know, it's always, um, is difficult, um, in looking at these charter renewals and knowing that, um, they will be impacting people's, uh, lives. So I hear you. At the same time, I have, still have some concerns. This school has, um, the, the issues regarding, especially the fiscal issues, um, have been consistent. But the responses and the level of response to those concerns have not been consistent in that they don't seem like they have been addressed, um, very seriously until up, until maybe even this point. When these appeals come to us, the charter has three major stabs, if you will, at addressing concerns. Um, and at the, at the district level, um, and then at the ACCS, and then- And at the, at the district level, and then at the ACCS, and then coming to here. I do not, did not hear of anything about any kind of austerity plan or any major mitigation to the, to the financial issues up until this point today. And I will have some additional questions when we get to the question part, but just wanted to put out there that I still have some concerns.
Member Burr, did you want to make some comments?
Yeah, I think my comments are largely along the lines of Board Member Sun. Let me, again, also say thank you to everyone who called in. It's clear that there's strong feelings in support of the school by, especially by its parents and students that we heard from. But unfortunately, I feel like our responsibility is to, sort of twofold. It's both for academic performance and also financial integrity. And again, just to reinforce what Board Member Sun said, you know, we have overseen this school, meaning the State Board of Education, for five years. And for five years, we have seen consistent problems with financial issues. Stephanie Farland laid that out carefully. And I don't, I didn't feel confident in the presentation that was made, that they actually have been addressed. And I also have to say that in my deliberations about charters, I am always influenced greatly by what our own advisory commission says. And in the case of the advisory commission on this school, they voted unanimously to deny the renewal. And they, they considered it very carefully. And as I think you all know, the majority of people who are sit on the advisory commission are actually charter school operators or they're in oversight agencies. So I take with great consideration what the advisory commission says. So I'm looking forward to hearing what other board members have, but at this point, I'm not inclined to renew this school.
Thank you, Member Burr. I have a couple of questions that I'd like to start the conversation with. And first, this is to LA Unified, to Dr. Perry and your team. So, Dr. Perry, thanks for being with us. Yeah, it's been a while since we'd seen you before. So the first question is, and I know this because I live in the Los Angeles area, that LA Unified had generally made a commitment to not close charters during the pandemic. And we heard that you at least say that you originally recommended conditional approval. We were curious why and where the board disagreed with that original recommendation, how that evolved.
The steps, Board Vice President Strauss, were as follows. When our team analyzed the data in the months that we had to do it, our staff internal recommendation was denied. The pandemic, then, because now under fifteen oh five, we have a much longer time, the pandemic raged on. And when we began to talk with our leadership about that, that was a feeling, because ultimately, it's our superintendent's recommendation. We're staff, and we provide our best work to him. And then he then provides that recommendation to the board. And it was that, you know what, we don't know what's about to happen. You know, let's call a halt on that. However, when it got to the board level, there was considerable discussion. And it really revolved around what Board Member Sun and Board Member Burr were just discussing. Plans that weren't plans. You know, no path forward. And this is not a new school. You know, this organization has been, you know, you can say it's a new school because this is the renewal. But the organization's been around a while. And one would expect the ability to create a plan, particularly a financial plan, that was stronger. We even had discussions of the finances with the renewal of one of the other schools. It was a very difficult renewal because we had to dig into the finances. So I hope I answered your question. The board looked at that. They looked at schools in the area and how those schools were doing, and ultimately made the decision that, in the best interest of students and in the, you know, in adhering to the education code, that it would be recommendation for denial. And they voted, and Ms. Farland shared what that vote was.
Thank you. I have another question for you before I ask a CD question. So we heard a lot of commitment to the IB program and how parents valued it, they drive for that program. We certainly heard from the staff and students, certainly how students are prepared and, and how they, that's a unique opportunity. So if the CD recommendation is upheld to close it, how are you going to think about students and how they'd be supported in LAUSD to transition? Because we worry about continuity particularly now. And we've heard that there's not as many IB programs. So what is the, I know your team has thought about this. What is the plan if the school should close?
Right. I'll speak first and then turn to our director, who has also been in contact, and together, I think we can give you a full picture. First of all, what our team does, as I indicated before, we have, we have a lot of experience with this, not so much in denials, but more in self-closures. We have quite a few of those. So we have a process that we go through. And the first one always has to be a transcript analysis. We need to look at where those students are and what they need. Not only transcripts, we need to look at IPs. We've spoken with our Division of Special Education, who stands ready to pull the IP data and begin to look at that and decide where the appropriate placement for those students will be. We have a number of types of programs that students will be afforded an opportunity to go to. Mr. Cole Gutierrez, would you fill in for this?
Thank you, Dr. Perry, and, oh, good morning to you all. And Board Vice President Strauss, thank you for asking that important question. In addition to what Dr. Perry shared, we've had already detailed conversations, respectfully knowing that the state makes the final decision, but in preparation with our colleagues in our local districts in this community, as well as surrounding communities. Looking at several school options, the process of contacting families with the support of CD staff, the transcript analysis that Dr. Perry mentioned, looking at IB programs in the area. There are high school IB programs in the area. Some of them are about six miles from the location. We did hear of some parents driving from other areas to, for this school. There are others in proximate areas. It still may be a bit of a, of a drive. But there are more options than the ones that were cited in Hacienda Heights and Granada Hills, et cetera. In short, board members, staff's commitment is to have an individualized approach. Families will have their choices from district programs. And always, we also share other programs in the area, whether they're LA Unified Authorized Charter School programs. So they have the full array of options available to them. And we will then support them to see which best fit their child's needs. Again, I reiterate, never an easy decision. We honor that. We honor those voices. But also seek to support the appropriate following of the law and accountability wherever that's the necessary. So you can count on our commitment to provide that individualized service and to help families make their choices.
Thank you. My last question, before I turn it to other board members. This is to Stephanie Farland from CD, and then I'm going to be asking Prepatech to respond to the English Language Development Program. It's been really important in California to look at integrated and designated support for English learners. I believe this school serves a large English learner population. We've continued to evaluate that in our review of charters. First, Stephanie, I believe, and I'd like you to review, that the CD did not find the English Language Development Program adequate to meet the needs. And then I'd like Prepatech to respond on what the actual program is. So please, Stephanie, if you can address that, that'd be helpful.
Yes, thank you. So what we found was they do have an intervention program. And their intervention program, from all accounts, seems to be adequate. What they don't have is they don't have a curriculum. And if I remember correctly, and I wasn't here at the time, so I think this is correct, but when they were approved last go-around by the State Board, that was one of the things that they needed to correct. And, and they haven't. And so I'm not sure why they haven't done that yet. And, and I think there may, I don't know if there's some confusion around whether the intervention program is the curriculum, but, program, but according to our Special Ed Division staff who reviewed this, they, they do not have a standards-aligned curriculum for their school. And I'm sure they can, they can talk about what their program is or does, but that's what we have found, is that they do have an intervention program. They, but we're not sure if it's standard, standards-aligned, because they don't have an actual curriculum that's standards-aligned at the school.
Thank you, Stephanie. So I appreciate the explanation. So I'll ask Prepatech, and I'm not sure which, I know we have several representatives from Prepatech, about what the English Language Development Program is for all students. And if you want to expand and explain the intervention, this is a critical issue for us, particularly in student support that have English learner needs. So we'd appreciate if somebody from Prepatech would be willing to address that. I don't know if Mr. Agiri, are you the one that's going to address it?
I can address it, and Miss Vialobos can chime in. One of the things that is clear with our IB program, the, the premise of IB is international. And so they offer, one of the two, the things that is part of the IB program is the dual language, meaning developing our students with a primary language, which is, in many cases, English. But in other cases, for English learners, it is Spanish. That's their primary language. Developing that language at the same time, they're developing the other language, the language, what they call in IB world, the language B. And so the language B would be their secondary language, and that's how we structured our program. We use Read 180 as a tool for our students to be able to use a technology, current technology, for their acquisition of the English language. They, one of the things that is, is embedded within the IB is where their units, as they develop the units, there are the EL standards that need to be addressed, and teachers indicate that in their unit development. We manage that, where teachers enter, create their units. And within that, they have their content standards, as well as the ELD standards, that they are to address within the student, within the class. And so that is what's, what we do within our students. And so then the other thing is they have the ELD part, where the teachers work with the, to the Read 180 and align that with the ELD standard in order to address the development of the language, English language acquisition.
Thank you for the explanation. Ms. Vialobos is going to also clarify. I just want to make sure if she.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you so much. I'm unable to share my video, so excuse me for that. It says that the host is not allowing me at this time, so I'm sorry. But just to kind of further what Mr. Agiri said is, oh, thank you so much. Thank you. And just to reiterate what we stated is, we do absolutely have recognized that at the beginning of the history for Prepatech High School, that there was a little bit of an issue with that. And so the first thing that we did when we came onboard, it's going to now be three years of new administration, is we identified that administration, first and foremost, has to be part of the multi-remote support division. And we participate in the English Language Roadmap Project, for example, to be able to strengthen our English learners program. The next step that we took is we also compared how IB standards and the spoken sequence of IB correlates with the California English Language Development Framework and, as well as the English Language Standards. So once we were able to identify that, then we made sure that the MTSS process came into effect to ensure that we had, and we deemed both the designated ELD as well as the integrated ELD, utilizing also the states, what is it called, the states, I got, the ISAP for, you know, from the state, which is the Individual Student Assessment Accessibility Profile in the beginning of the discussions, to know where we're placing our kills once they come into Prepatech High School.
Thanks so much for the clarification. So I'm going to turn to other board members now for any clarifying questions for CD, for the, for the LA Unified, or for Prepatech. Sung, go ahead.
So for CD staff, Stephanie, you had mentioned that in the latest proposal of financials, that there was an additional twenty-two students or something. Was that added for this year?
Thank you, Member Sun. Well, based on their analysis and all, you know, we obviously didn't have a lot of time to dig into this since we just got it this week. But it did seem like in the March report, prior to ACCS, there were three hundred and thirty-four students. In the May report, there were three hundred and fifty-six listed, which is a difference of twenty-two. And so I, I'm not sure where that difference came from, if it was a typo, if it, I, so I, like I said, there wasn't a lot of explanation along with the various changes. So I don't know where it comes from.
Right. And so was that to then, did that then translate to the actual budget for this year and the revise of this year's budget? That there would be, because it's, yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm not, I'm not sure, because they, I mean, what they're giving us is a new projected budget, but they use the current numbers, which is different. So I, like, they don't, they didn't, so they didn't redo their whole, as far as I know. And I have my fiscal person on, on the call if I'm mucking this up. But I didn't see any reason why they would currently change the, the numbers in current year. So I could see if they were changing enrollment projections for future years, for the next five years. But in terms of the report that we received this week, they actually had a difference in current year numbers. And I just, and there would no explanation, Member Sun, as to why, why that was. So there was, so that would be a good question for them. Are, my fiscal person is saying that this, there was no budget assumption for the May report. Most of the revenue remained the same. So I'm really not sure why those numbers changed.
Okay. If it's enrollment, but then increase, but then the budget numbers didn't change for that year, it's, it's fine, because it's hold harmless this year anyway. So their, their, their enroll numbers would not impact any of their, their ADA, because we're held harmless this year. So it's.
Okay. Well, I guess part of the issue just is, is that the enrollment numbers never have been what they were supposed to be. If you look at the, at the initial petition that you all approved, this board approved, before their enrollment numbers, they were projecting over six hundred students for, for 2020, 21. So that's been part of the issue over the last several years. And it's been part of one of the concern letters that we sent earlier in their term, was that they were not meeting their enrollment numbers.
Okay, thank you. And then for LAUSD, Mr. Perry talked about an individualized approach to the students and making sure they're placed. And so I'm assuming that if some of these students are eligible for an IB diploma, and they're a year away or two years away, that you would do the best you can to place them in a program where they can actually receive that diploma?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm looking for other board member clarifications or comments. So I don't see any hands raised. So at this time, I'll see if. So I don't see any hands raised, so at this time, um, I'll see if somebody's ready to make a motion.
I would move to adopt the department's recommendation.
And I will second that. I, I, I agree with, um, member Burr that, um, the ACCS, um, has a lot of sway as well, uh, having heard, um, this, this charter in much, much even greater detail than here.
So thank you, we have a motion and a second. So Executive Director Allen, would you please call the roll?
Member Burr.
Aye.
Member Fatah.
Aye.
Member Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Novo. Member Patilla Brownson.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Rucker.
Yes.
Member Strauss, Vice President Strauss, apologize.
Yes.
Member Sun.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, thank you, um, thank you Stephanie, thank you to all of our presenters. Um, I hereby adjourn the May twenty twenty-one state board meeting at twelve oh four PM. Thank you all for, for your, for your comments and your engagement and for sharing and being part of the discussion this morning. So I look forward to seeing you all. Um, CDC says we may not have to wear as many, our masks as much if we've been vaccinated, so looking forward to seeing more of you all in July and wishing that everyone stays healthy and well. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you, Eileen.